...of newly elected officials. So, anyone who's here who's been elected and wants to get sworn in this morning? Good morning. Violet. Let's wait for Zoe. She's coming in.
We say stand.
Where are we? We're gonna go over here.
They're all from down this way.
That guy's all lined up in the back.
He knows Zoe's coming.
There you go, everybody. Good morning, everyone. For those of you that haven't met, I'm Nancy Martucci, the town clerk. Congratulations, everyone, and thank you for joining us this morning. I'm going to administer notes for you at the end. You can say, "I do." And then if you would then please come over, you'll find your name on the note sheets. Sign them, and you can take a pen. And then we'll allow the board of selected to resume their meeting.
Do we want to put our hand up?
So, if you'll all raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or sincerely affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, and the Charter of the Town of Madison so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of your elected office to the best of your ability under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's going to be the back quarter. Number three on the agenda is approval of minutes from October 23rd. Any motion?
Sub move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four, first elect's comments. I'd just like to say, looking forward to the next two years, working together with my father on board as we face whatever we face in the next two years.
The unknown, the abyss.
Number five, citizens' comments. Cool.
Tom, that was your out loud voice.
Discuss and take action when appointing an acting first selectman. I'll accept nominations.
I make a motion to nominate Bruce Wilson.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Do we need to explain to the public what that means? Acting first selectman.
When I'm out of town, he's acting as first selectman.
It's the Al Haig Clause. There you go.
He's in charge. Number seven, discuss and take action to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen adopts and amends the 475 and 401A defined contribution plans, naming Madison Public Schools as a participating employer, and be it further resolved that the first selectman and the director of finance or her designated are authorized to execute the participation agreement and other relevant documents pertaining to the inclusion of the Madison Public Schools into the defined contribution plan.
Sub move? Second.
Any discussion on that?
I think it'd be very helpful to explain which employees this covers.
For those who haven't met me, I'm Heather Docson. I'm the HR Director for the Board of Education. We recently, this past July 1st, negotiated a contract with the cafeteria union, and this contract does provide that employees currently in the Town and Madison Pension Plan were grandfathered in the plan. However, any newly hired or newly pension-eligible employees will participate in the defined contribution plan. Our plan is set up slightly different than the Town, that we do have a 3% mandated contribution, and we will match up to 4%. So, as you've seen with the change that the Town has made in the last few years, this is an attempt to have some savings in the pension plan obligations for the Town as a whole. And we will continue to push forward this change as we go into future union contract negotiations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, discuss and take action to approve the use of Bauer Park Old Community Gardens for the Madison Water Retravelled, if needed.
Sub move? Second.
Any discussion?
Tom, I just wanted to confirm that this note at the bottom means that the Beach and Rec Commission has approved this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from the Tax Department in the amount of $3,000 to fund the prior year account based on proration, ration, ration? Proration of motor vehicle bills from 2015 grant list, which resulted in overpayments. Everybody understand? Somebody want to make a motion first?
Sub move. Second.
Is there anything in our package that describes?
What the heck this is?
This is special appropriation form in your package.
There is.
This one. That was on the right page. Okay.
So, if you read the reason for request from all of them, it gives you a little more detail as to what exactly you're looking for.
So, we'll get these, we'll get these requests as they come through, but this is just to move the money over. We will continue to approve the individual requests as they come through.
But the point is, this is non, is it non-budgeted, the three pound?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Discuss.
Yes. So, these were payments that were made, and that we don't budget to pay the refunds out. Sooner or later, to pay the refunds out, we have to move the money over there.
Can we take that from the unsigned?
That would be the Board of Finance's decision where the money comes from.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
The intent, discuss and take action to allow the Public Works Department to waive the bid process for a pre-characterization sampling plan of the septic lagoons located on Ridge Road.
Sub move. Second.
Okay, so, John, you want to, Rob?
Just overview of the project. Okay.
I'd like to first ask you to focus on why you want us to waive the normal process here.
Okay, sure. So, the, the state, we received a sum of $250,000 from the state, from a unilever settlement back in 2015, so the project has sort of been idle since that time. But the money, the settlement runs out June 30th of 2018. So, it's a three-phase project. In my opinion, it's the sampling of the septic lagoons, the closure plan to DEP, and then the construction of the closure. And the winter is upon us at this point, and the sampling cannot be done when the snow, when inclement weather and snow, and it may mess with the samples. So, my goal is to complete this first phase of the sampling before the winter hits, and then we can put out an RFP for the closure plan through the winter, and hopefully be ready to go into construction sometime in spring. So, because of the weather and the deadline with the EPA's unilever settlement, I think we should expedite the process.
Thanks, Rob.
The word on the street is there may be some snowflakes today, by the way.
Oh, no.
I just want to make sure. This is a reasonably hefty contract, as I understand. And the explanation is that there's not enough time for the bid process in order to get the sampling done before the weather.
Right. Right. It was, like I said, the, with the idle status of the project for a while, we're forced to sort of go to this measure and get the sampling done. Because we wait until, if we wait and do more of a formal bidding process for just this first phase, there's no way we'll get phases two and three complete. And unfortunately, I spoke with DEP, and if we're not at least at the construction phase by the time the spring comes, if we try to apply for an extension on that money, I'm not saying definitely, but there's a good chance, you know, the money will, could go. And I just don't want to put the time in that position. So, I feel like I understand this is a hefty sum, but we could follow formal procedures for phases two and three, for the closure plan and construction. But this first phase, we can't go anywhere without this first phase being completed.
And this is only the first phase, the pre-destruction, pre-characterization that we're looking for, waiving the bid process. Right?
Yeah.
Which is, which is how much? Just like Heather said.
Oh, that's in the next motion.
Okay.
Have you seen comparable things from other towns, so we know this is in the ballpark?
Yeah, basically Clinton and, well, I haven't seen Essex and Killiworth, but I believe, Clinton's, it was a little tough because theirs, their sampling and their whole closure plan was encapsulated into one fee. So, I'm not, I can't, I can't really comment on how much of that was broken out for sampling, how much was broken out for the closure plan. But it was actually more than this, but that actually obviously included the phase two. They hired, they hired someone outright to do the first two phases. So, yeah, I'm not really sure.
This is a contractor the Town has used over the years many times, and with good result. And you have reason to believe this is a reasonable estimate.
Yeah, I think so. It was significantly lower prior to August, but then we received a first round of comments from DEP requiring different types of testing and different types of metals to look for. And then, and then Woodard and Carr have advised, you know, their pro bono sampling plan that they had done for us, we had sent that back to DEP, and they understand that I need to expedite the process with the deadline approaching. So, they, they gave us an approval with certain conditions. And with those conditions, they added another, another load of things, inclusions they liked. So, we're hoping that, you know, with the sampling, this is sort of like the last line. And if, after this phase goes, we could, we could go to DEP and say, "Listen, whether this does meet it or does not meet what you're looking for, you know, we can't afford to continue making expenditures on something, on something like this." So, we, this first phase, I feel, needs to be done so we know exactly what we're dealing with. Other than that, we're still just guessing.
Is there any risk of going over the 40 grand?
Uh, no, that's, that's a time and materials sort of contract. So, basically, I'm hoping that they could find the monitoring wells, excuse me, the existing monitoring wells that are there, they could do the samples. And I'm hoping it comes in lower than 40, but worst case, I'm.
Perfect. So, it's a ceiling.
Yeah, it's a cap, 40,000.
So, Robert, your intention for the next phases of this will follow the normal bid process?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, right now, we're just taking action on waiving the bid process. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 11, discuss and take action to approve a contract with Woodard and Carr totaling $40,000 to prepare a pre-characterization sampling plan of the septic lagoons located on Ridge Road.
Sub move? Second.
Any further discussion? Everybody happy? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number 12, discuss and take action to approve funding ahead of the bridge replacement structural analysis in the amount of $5,000 from the planning reserve account. Sub move?
Second.
Any discussion?
Other people can make motions, you know.
They're very quick.
We've talked about this before, so if there's any further questions.
Just looking down the road, is this particular project going to be incorporated into our CIP?
It would have to.
It has to be.
It would have to.
So, I think just.
I think we're reacting to the poor, the poor bridge condition report
Right.
to get the work started, and this will have to be part of, certainly part of one of the projects that this board recommends that the CIP.
And this is a pretty long process.
I can imagine, yeah.
Similar to the county, the process we just went through.
Right, exactly. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 13, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from the Public Works Department in the amount of $30,005,1950 to fund materials for septic system installations and service for main electrical work for the Strong Center fieldhouses.
Make a motion?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this, Tom, will there be any other special appropriation requests to finish this project off?
Yes, we're putting that together. Thought DuO was going to be here. She was going to talk about what's going on with that. But, Rob, do you want to talk about this at all?
And then Al, let's stick a pin in your thought and then go back to it at the end of this discussion. Before we take the vote. Is that good?
Okay.
If I have some thoughts on it as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying to fit this into the longer.
Yeah, so, maybe we could hear about this, and then before we take the vote, we can talk more about what the finishing plan looks like. Is that fair?
That's fine.
Robert, Johnny, do you already have anything to talk about?
Well, sure, yeah. Well, so, I came into this pretty late on in the project, basically trying to finish out the engineering with, related to the electrical supply in the two fieldhouse buildings and the septic systems. So, we, we did some, some design, you know, finishing up some design work and some kind of some construction management with, with the utilities. And so, Public Works did all the trenching, proved these electrical conduits, and we kind of oversaw the septic system installation that was done by a, essentially, I guess, free labor by Anderson, Anderson Brothers. And so, as far as the funding, I'm not really sure, you know, why, can't really speak to why the funding isn't there to complete the project. We're just trying to get this thing completed. The electrical piece, though, as I understand, Rob, did get, you got bids for?
Yep. So, yeah.
The electrical piece of serving the two fieldhouse buildings.
But that's separate from this $30,000.
That's part of it.
It's included.
It's included.
Yeah, so, the 30,000 includes the Ensign Brothers, the materials cost. Like John said, the labor was donated free. And then the, the electrical main power to both buildings, we competitively bid that at the stage of mandated prevailing wager rates. So, we had four or five different electrical contractors come out. A large portion of withdrew because of the state labor requirements. So, we, but we did have a couple bids to make a competitive price. And hey, this electric was a little bitter on that. And we decided to move forward with the main power.
So, part, part of the problem with this thing is that none of this was designed into the project in the beginning. It's kind of dropped on you as we went along.
Yeah.
Right? Including the septic, I think Troy, Trent was involved in helping make sure the septic system was acceptable, and it had to be redesigned from what we originally saw. Problem is, the fieldhouse project was restricted for fieldhouses. Didn't include any pertinences, any attachments, and it wasn't accounted for when they first, you know, within the $500,000 grant. So, so, to answer your question, yeah, there are more things coming along because what we considered as being the entire plan developed was not. It was just the fieldhouses being dropped in place, and the rest of it was left somehow to our best, I guess, efforts.
But my understanding is this, so this work is completed at this point, though?
Right.
So, we're, we're kind of retro, looking back at this, so.
The electric's like 90, 90%.
Right.
They're deenergizing the transformer and making, installing the meter to the two fieldhouses on Wednesday. But all the conduit is in place. They've done their work at the buildings. It's now, it's just coordination with Everso. Everso said push that back, date back two weeks because of the storms.
Right. But just in understanding that, I guess I'm scratching my head a little bit on, given the work is done, how did we not know?
Well, that's, that's where DuO is going to come in, because Strong Center project people have been funding all this.
Right, it's the public-private partnership thing, right?
Right. They came up short without, you know, they didn't see, they didn't see it coming. They were expecting money from somebody else, and it didn't come in. And so, we were left.
Pulled back.
Yeah.
So, how does that work with the public-private partnership? Is there somebody in essence on point to run the project from their side and somebody from our side? How does that sort of marriage work?
Yeah.
So that, so that there's one plan versus two plans?
Want to talk about how you work with Nicole and DuO on that part of it?
Do you guys have a primary contact that you work with?
Well, I guess it's been DuO's, DuO and DuO's assistant, Nicole, that we've been sort of working on as far as coordinating the architecture and grading around the buildings with the site work, you know, adjacent to the buildings. So, that's kind of my, that was my first real exposure is, you know, I met with, I met at DuO's office a couple of months ago, just to bring me up to speed on where, tell me about this project.
And they continue to fund it. So, if they, if they raise any funds going forward, they're going to, they're going to reimburse us, you know, as they get it. Because they've got nothing else to pay for except for what we're paying for.
Is that in writing somewhere? Do we have a, is that just sort of a gentleman's agreement?
Stacy?
I don't, yeah.
I just want to make sure that there's, I mean, we probably should be covering ourselves there.
So, now, maybe circling back to Al's original point, there is more work that needs to be done, right?
Yeah.
And presumably, it's.
When you say more work, though, define that. So, you mean unscoped work or unbudgeted work?
Yes.
Or just more work?
Well, I think what we have is, we have a project that was started, and it didn't have sufficient detail on all of the, sort of the punch list type of items, and we're down to that, right? Down to that might be a lot of money, but it's, it's sort of all of the ancillary work that has to be done to truly finish the field. And that's where we're at, right?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, when I, so, going back, I guess about two months ago, when I met with DuO's office, my, my understanding of the whole project was that the two fieldhouses and the plaza area between the fieldhouses, there's a, so you have the two kind of twin fieldhouses, and there's a plaza area going in between the fieldhouses and football field. All of that has been funded, I guess. And then the portion westerly of the two buildings out, you know, towards the, away from the field, that whole piece was so-called townwork. So, it's kind of just left unfinished there. There's a, there's the electrical service that's outside, you know, to the west of the fieldhouse buildings, and sort of a bus drop-off circle that's supposed to go in that, that serves the, the fieldhouse building. So, it runs adjacent to the fieldhouses, and it's a drop-off area, apparently. So, it's the, it's the road work and the utility work that still has to be completed, or else it's just sort of a, you know, a fieldhouse project, and you sort of have just a, you know, unfinished area next to it.
Right. I, I get the fact that this, so this is sort of a baton pass, so I completely understand that. But, and my question is not directed at either of you, per se. Maybe I directed more to Tom. But, so, at the end of the day, given this is a public and private partnership, who is on point? Who is our quarterback to this project? Who owns this project? Is it the private or is it the public?
Well, as far as the fieldhouses are concerned, it's DuO.
Let me give you maybe a little bit of history. I mean, this has always been a public project. This has been a project that was, by the way, I'm doing tickets in the Arctic. This has always been a project that was proposed by civilians and then approved by you. And it was conceived by the need of an old facility and potential new uses. And with the partnership being that we, we, the civilians, would raise a lot of money. And that leveraged into the existing low-cap appropriation that was always for that field, about $800,000, and then working with the Strong Fund, several hundred thousand dollars more. Then, our group raised, Strong Board raised over a million and a half dollars in cash and in kind. That leveraged phase one, which was getting the field done. Then our private money paid for all the other field work that was going on there to essentially keep the ball rolling and raise more money, which we have done. And the Town was instrumental three years ago in assisting us in applying four times, four times, for STEAP funding. We got the grant. Then, the private side kicked in again, basically my office. We then bid the project three times. First two bids got nothing, last got an incredibly great competitive scenario. That bidding then leveraged work that would have potentially allowed us, potentially allowed us to finish even this year if we had enough money. We kind of had enough money to do a lot, but we have a gap to finish. In construction, you either spend less money by doing more things at once or more net money by doing smaller numbers of things on an ongoing basis, because you end up redoing and undoing. During that time, the hookups to the buildings, but also the curving, the streets, gate, everything, those ambiguous, those ambiguous, ambiguous things that really weren't part of our fundraising, but part of the implications of the project, enabled us with several selectmen, not just Tom, but a bunch of selectmen to sort of figure out a path that curving and streets and maybe utilities get kind of worked out with the Town in some shape, manner, or form. And then, in terms of these specific hookups to the buildings, the Town's been extremely helpful in doing trenching and helping us liaise with the water company, which donated a lot of services on their end. And with Town staff, they've actually shepherded, shepherded these connections from existing things that were also done in a way that maximized the fiduciary responsibility to spend both our money, or our money raised and given to the Town, and the Town's money in a way which minimized the net expenditure of cash by the appropriate jumping into some of these scenarios while in the heat of battle, where you've actually got the equipment and the person power out there to actually affect the connections. So, my take is that in getting the septic done and in getting utility hookups made, tens of thousands of dollars have been saved by the ability to do it immediately. In terms of the funding stream for that, that's kind of above our pay grade. We, we leveraged the free application of all the labor to do all the septic installation, free and donated labor, maybe worth $20,000, maybe more. And we also leveraged all of the applying for the money to affect the utilities once they went into the building and actually create the portal with the, for the existing mechanical connections when we actually paid for and helped manage with, with Engineer Ott, the, the foundation design itself. So, it's been, it's been a direct interaction, but from the Board's point of view, the Strong Board's point of view is, this is your project. This is the Town's project, which really means it's our project, both sides, in the whole room, because we're all a part of Madison. So, the idea of getting something done the right way, the least expensive way, means that things, and there's not full funding of everything. We started this project thinking there was a million-dollar donor that never donated a million dollars and have since raised from over 500 people, really 1,000 people. We've raised that million and a half dollars in, in work. And trying to get this thing done in the least expensive way means we do more things in any given area. And I can tell you that we had hoped to start the plaza, but the time it took to build the buildings, no fault of anyone's except they're nice buildings that were done well, took longer than the GC anticipated, which means that instead of starting the plaza now, literally last week, we're probably, we are going to start it in the, in the spring when the weather breaks. But we are going to do a little memorial garden, which was part of the financing of a very generous donor right now, right next to the stand. So, we're going to be building that right now. And I can tell you that the Town's been unbelievably helpful, thoughtful. Nobody's gone off half-cocked. All the engineering in Town has been on the case, and the Board has been on the case. So, it's been extremely well managed in terms of the outcome, in terms of this last phase of getting it implemented. We're here to help, but that's really your job.
I appreciate that.
Continue to fundraise?
We are fundraising like crazy, and we've gotten, in the last two months, something like, and I'm making this up, but something like $10,000 or $15,000 in the last couple of months by selling rights to a flagpole and by selling a bench, I think, or two. We also have one more, the camera's on, we have one more $5,000 blank plaque, so we need a Silver's donor, and that would help a lot. And we have been in eight years contacts with people for the potential for 30 with people for the potential for 30, 50,000 dollars more than we need to just close it out. And we definitely want to pay for everything that is done. But we also would like to rely on the town to do some things that are in their best interests as well. Things that are really outside of our fundraising. Things like curbing, roads, things like that.
I appreciate the history. That's a huge help. Thank you. And, and by the way, I mean, the project is looking fantastic down there and the donations of our vendors, you know, and, and support structure is incredible. I, I come back to my original question though because I, I'm getting nervous that hearing additional scope and things that we're adding, you know, typically in a project of this magnitude and with this many piece parts, we would have a point person as a project manager. Who would you look at as the project manager on this?
Well, it's typically been the town engineer-
Right.
And me. Because I'm the architect, I would be if I was being paid. And I'm not being paid, but if I was being paid, the architect would be at, at one side of the town engineer, who is the person that leads all construction projects through under your supervision. So this is no different. Just that I'm not being paid and we're part of the funding stream. That's all. And in fact, nothing's been added to the scope of work, zero. This is exactly the project that we started with. We haven't changed anything. It's a question of financial responsibility and we would love to have a donor who's watching this right now write us a check for $50,000 and then we could just say, here's the check and give it to you. But that's, doesn't happen. And we're, we had the, we had the incredibly great builder have the opportunity to build the, the project now. And we had the foundations in privately funded and privately executed in terms of the excavation for free. So I think this is merely closing out something which has had, was probably the single most successful public-private enterprise that I've ever been involved with in doing 40 years of architecture. I've never seen anything like this. Where the patience and the faith that you had, this group has had, not one of you, I think, well, you were here, Al was here, but, but, but the fact that you guys had the faith or a decade in us and that our donors had the faith in us, I think really, to me, is part of the, is part of the deal we made and I hope you follow through on. Because this is a tiny, tiny percent of a 3.5, 3.8 billion dollar project. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars that would be more spent if delayed. So if we do this now, we actually spend less of either our donors' money or the town's money. So I, I think it's an absolutely reasonable request.
Is there, is there a master plan which, which denotes all of these costs that we're
So to answer your question, the, the prior town engineer was the project manager. When he left, it got passed to our engineering department. So both of these guys are acting as project manager for different parts of the project. And they, John, just last week, we're, you know, as we, as we saw this developing, I asked John to develop a plan for everything that's left, you know, what's, what it's gonna cost and to figure out how we need to finish this whole thing off. Scott's got a, I don't know if Scott's here, but Scott's got a portion of it because there's fencing involved. So we're trying to pull all those numbers together so that we can go back to board finance and to the town and say, here's what it's gonna take to finish this project.
So I think that segues back into where Al started this. And, and I'd like to propose that that plan come back to us and we create a project, a strong finishing project and incorporate that into CIP and see it properly budgeted as opposed to a special appropriation. I think, one, it, it allows you guys to show that you've got your arms around the, the project that you were handed off. And it allows us to show the taxpayers that we're, we're in control of this project and seeing it through to finish.
I like where you're going with this, Bruce. Duo, just as you have a sure hand when it comes to design, you, you have a sure voice when it comes to explaining and I appreciate that. I'd like to make sure we learn what we can from this project and, and figure out how to go forward. This has been a unique public-private project. I can't think of anything else remotely like it in the recent history of this town. Nevertheless, I think this may be a chance for us as a board and the town government to try to learn from what has transpired and how we might handle similar things better in the future. And I guess when we get into a project like this, I'm, I'm not quite sure whether it's CIP or, or the engineering staff, but it would be great much earlier in the process, Bruce, to do exactly what you're suggesting is to understand what exposure the town is gonna have and to plan for it. I think that's what we're feeling this morning is, is, I don't wanna use the word surprise, but, but these are expenses that I guess we weren't aware of and-
And it sounds like there's more coming too.
Yeah. And so I think what you're suggesting, I'd love to learn and, and make sure that happens earlier in the process so that we as selectmen and the townspeople understand that the town may be on, may be contributing.
Well, not, not to blame the person who's not in the room, but the truth is that, that, that we had that list. We have that list. We've had that list for four years. And so we actually had on paper, in writing and in drawings, all the things that we knew we were handling and all the things that we were not handling. And have, and have discussed that with two selectmen. I don't think we ever discussed with you because you've left. We discussed it with two selectmen and with, with Mike for a very long time because we weren't about to pull any trigger that we didn't know wouldn't have closure, at least temporary closure. The thing that gets ambiguous is that we, that our plaza is virtually all, not, almost all of our donor recognition. So we viewed that with some sense of ownership and, and control until we handed it over. We wanted to make sure that all the donors that gave so much money were correctly recognized and recognized the best possible way. So we're close to having enough money to do that. We don't have enough money to do the last, say, 10 or 20% of that. The other aspects of it are, we're really always in the town's, I would say, agenda, if not hard pricing. Things like the roads and the, and the curbing and other things were always in the town, town agenda. They're always part of our design, part of the acknowledged litany of things that we laid out. So I think there has been on-the-ground understanding, but maybe there is more of a, a larger scale responsibility of the town engineer as he shepherds the thing through to keep the selectmen completely engaged, board of finance completely engaged. Because we viewed this thing, because it did, has taken us, what, four years since we started actual fabrication of the thing. We viewed it as a gateway project where we wanted to do things because we'd raised a lot of money. We knew we couldn't finish things. And it's worked out remarkably well. We've been able to stopgap the functions of the, of the fieldhouses until now. But we had the field, we had the lights, we had the stadium, we had the scoreboard. It's functioned for three years beautifully. So this last little bit is quite little and it's been nothing for us to actually work with the town to just lay it all out.
Duo, with that, that document that you mentioned you've shared, could you share that with all of us so that we're on the same page?
Surely. Send to you. Do you want to get back to the office?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Actually, Tom's got it. Tom has it in his, in his possession.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, just so that we understand the scope of the project. I, I just want to be conscious that, you know, given, you know, we're, we're being asked for 30,000 today and I don't know what the remaining items might be. I, I just want to be conscious that the town is not being leveraged as a, a banking source also. I mean, I think there needs to be a, frankly, an agreement of how we're gonna get this project to close and what is the expectation of the town? What is the expectation of the private sector to, to complete the project?
Right.
So.
And perhaps as we're entering the next budget cycle, I'd like to make sure that any capital projects that are being contemplated, that either through CIP or through Stacy's good offices, that, that we're certainly made aware of any exposure the town might have with some of these projects. If we're applying for grants and the grant's not gonna quite cover the whole thing, you know, obviously that should be made very clear to all of us. And again, I don't know whether we're gonna get in a public-private partnership like this again, but, but I think the lesson I've learned is, is, is we need to make sure we understand what exposure the town is gonna have. And in no way am I criticizing the project.
Yeah. I mean, the, the upside of that is, and this is just the truth, that you have about a $4 million facility that you, that you paid out of your pockets, probably a million plus for. So it's one of these things where the goodwill of you and of us has given the town 40 years' worth of having perhaps the best athletic facility and maybe arts, outside arts facility that a town owns anywhere I know of in Connecticut.
And I don't think anybody should confuse the town wrestling with how it manages its finances with, you know, this, this beautiful facility that everybody agrees, well, one, we want it done today and-
I wanted it done eight years ago.
And two, you know, it's, it's just an invaluable addition to the community.
No doubt.
And so, so that, that's, I don't think that's really the, the discussion we're having. We're not diminishing that work in any way or the value that it's brought to the community. It's how do we do our business a little bit better, is really the discussion.
And I keep coming back to program management. So it's program managing a very complex project that has a lot of interdependencies here. And, and there were some handoffs and transitions and there's some complexities there that we need to make sure we're accounting for.
But speaking as a 37-year resident at Madison, I can tell you that the only way you get projects like this, that you get the next project like this, is that you have the flexibility that's been shown over the last 10 years. In other words, if there was a hard and fast set of criteria, you wouldn't have the groundswell of support. I only know this because I work in about 100 different towns in 12 states. And I can tell you, the more regulated and more intense oversight that, that the town superstructure puts on management, the less likely you are to have these kinds of projects. So you have a delicate balance between encouraging this kind of spontaneous goodwill and free will giving, at the same time doing your responsibility to make sure that the town's money is spent in a way we, we all are happy with.
Absolutely.
And so, and so it's, it's hard because the truth is, the, was it three? Al, I don't know, three or four selectmen that we have dealt with have been incredibly helpful and thoughtful. And, and Mike Ott was incredibly helpful and thoughtful in dealing with many funding issues of applications and town meetings and all the rest of it. So there has been an enormous amount of accountability, both informal and formal here. This is just the last bit that maybe sets up a way that allows you to maintain that kind of positive civic potential.
Yeah, and I-
Without shutting it down.
And I think we're in a rather unique, I mean, Tom's talked to this a lot over the last couple of months in that we're in a bit of a, you know, an interesting situation relative to the state. So, you know, I think, you know, we just need to keep our eyes on, you know, some of the other projects that we have going on in town and prioritizing those against requests like this. So, you know, it's a challenge.
Total.
Any other discussion?
Okay, Tom, you're gonna be sharing with us a list of-
Right. Yeah, you have to understand, the, the engineering department, both John and Rob, have transitioned all the projects that were in existence when our former town engineer left. And they've done that pretty much on their own without, you know, they've had to evaluate and then pick them up and, and decide how we proceed with them. So that's taken some, some time for them to, you know, get their heads around everything. And I think they've got good, a good understanding of everything that we're involved with now. A lot of things are moving forward, you know, and the idea is we need to close out all these projects. We had way too many projects open all at the same time. We need to close them out and it's, honestly, it's a stress on, on the engineering department at this point. But I think they're doing a great job. I think they've, they've made a lot of improvements to things along the way. And, and one of the things that, that I especially appreciate from them is that they're very conscious of the dollars that they spend. They're, you know, they're, you were talking about skipping the pre-bid, pre-characterization bid process before. Well, that wasn't done easily, but it's done knowing that we're gonna save money in the process on the long run and get the project done. Because this is grant money that we don't want to lose.
Right.
You know, and so, so these guys are both doing tremendous work, picking up and running with the ball. And I appreciate everything you've done.
Here, here.
Where are we?
Yeah. We have an item that we, that was a lengthy discussion on one item.
So, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Oh, aye. I said aye. I think I said aye.
Number 14, discuss and take action to close the Poulsen roof Phase Three account. So moved. Thank you, Duo. I have a motion.
Second.
There we go.
Let's talk about it. What is this?
Stacy?
So this was a low-cap project to do work on the Poulsen roof. We did part of the roof and I believe, I wish Billy was here and could do it justice, but I believe the plan was to put solar on it as well, but the roof needed repairs. There were bubbles in it. So we need to get the roof repaired. So I believe he wanted to do what we did on the roof so far, close out the project and then move forward and perhaps look at those purchasing agreements, the power purchasing agreements to move forward with the project. But he didn't want to hold up the funds in the old low-cap project. So it's returning back to the CNRE master account.
How much is it?
165,000.
Stacy, could you tell the good folks at home watching, what, where does that money go?
Back into the CNRE master account as part of the CIP.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 15, discuss and take action to close the Island Avenue tank removal account.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. And so if Billy was here, he would tell you that he completed the removal of the underground tank in Island Avenue. And this is just how much of the funds that are left over. Stacy, do you know how much that is?
20, 20,000. There's a memo in there for $20,000.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to close the Madison Family Services Basement Project.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Rob, you want to talk about that?
Uh, no, I think Scott Cochran is happy with the results on there. We had one minor issue that, uh, had just had to install, not exterior drain, but I think, I think it was well, well under budget.
Right. Do you remember the numbers?
I think, I think- 57, 57,000.
57,000 left over.
They were in return.
So does this go into the CNRE, CNRE as well?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna hate me, but is there a way to account for money in the CNRE from under-budget projects?
Almost put it in a special.
Right? So every year, we want to increase that CNRE account, right? We want to grow it. By delivering projects under budget, we in effect can offset that additional funding. I think that that it's worth it for us to see that as well as the committee, right? So there's, there's no point taxing people a percentage again on money that we've saved, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So-
Credit it.
So Kristen is gonna kill me in my sleep, but-
She was sending you lasers.
There's not many, you know.
There's going to be a lot.
There's going to be a ton. Yes, yes. We will definitely keep track of those.
Thank you.
I think I'm the complaint department both ways this morning. We've talked about projects that were underfunded by the town. And now ironically, we, we have a handful of projects that were overfunded. Is there anything to learn from any of this?
Actually, it's difficult. You know, I mean, I, I think that the saving that they do is to the best of their ability. They put engineering money in a lot of these projects, you know, to try to zoom in on the, on the cost. But I think it's just, you know, learning how to operate within the CIP as we move forward.
Al, I, I might observe that this was one of the early CIP projects and I think there were roughly 1,000 projects that the, that the town budgeted in, in one season. I think in the, in the rush to, to budget, you know, we were probably more conservative than we needed to be. And then on the other side of it, when some creative thought was put into that project, I think that they were able to figure out a better, a better way to do it.
That's wonderful news. Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
So that's my, that's my recollection of that.
So I've lost track. Did we vote on this yet?
Nope. 57 we gotta do.
I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 17, discuss and take action to accept a Department of Public Health's invented Health Services Grant. This is a reimbursement grant which will not exceed $4,224.
So moved.
A motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Can you just remind us how the monies are applied?
Okay.
What, what do we use these monies for? What do we use these monies for?
So this is the first time Madison has applied for this grant. Health Department's called the Black Grant from BPH. Essentially, that's going to be the grant, that's the foundation for Healthy Heart, Inhabit Campaign. That's going to be coming down the pipeline. So that's kind of the starting point of it. A good portion of it is going to be some contract work, just because it is our first time accepting the grant. We want to do it the right way. So the state sees that and they're going to hopefully allow us more in the future.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eighteen, discuss and take action to approve a line and transfer from the Health Department to the amount of seven hundred dollars.
So moved. Second.
It's in here. Moving from...
Yes.
Supplies and staff traffic to uniform and telephone. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nineteen, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from the Health Department to the amount of seven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars to fund public health emergency preparedness initiatives.
So moved. Second.
Now, is this a, is this a, so this is the unbudgeted, let's say?
So essentially, this is a grant that we normally do receive. It's, this is the FEP grant for public health emergency preparedness. Because there's been some change with federal funding up at the CDC, they have now required all state health departments and local health departments to, what is join a HCC, a healthcare community, a healthcare coalition, sorry. I've already joined that with Yale alongside with, it's ESF eight, so essentially everybody in this region, Madison, Clinton, Guilford, Branford, we all are a part of the same healthcare coalition. So it's just been some postponing with the funding. We're expecting to get that mid-December after talking with the great coordinators, but I still have my month-to-month expenses for that, for that work. It's a thousand forty-nine dollars and nine cents. And it's, we've already been billed for four months and I factored in up until January. That's what is seven, three hundred comes in.
Trent, what services or programs does the public see out of this initiative?
Well, it's a good question, Al. I mean, essentially, we have been, we have developed some pods. These are mock emergencies, if you will. We haven't done one yet in Madison. We're trying to do one. I think the original plan was to do it here after talking with some of the coordinators and our fire marshal, Sam DeBurr, and other people across the table. We don't know if Town Hall is the best place. These mock things are a case of a mass dispensing unit. So we do like outbreaks, we did at Branford High School. So that community's are there. We do other efforts, you know, making sure that we have adequate storage of water bottles, beds at our shelters that are designated for emergency preparedness. That's essentially where these services go right now, just planning, planning, planning for emergencies.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Trent. Update from the Academy Street Steering Committee. Al, you've been sitting on this thing. Would you like to...
Well, I'll give a short progress report as we, I think as Tom and I reported in the selectmen at the last couple of meetings, we're in the RFP phase of this project in which nearly a dozen firms have been asked to share their ideas with the town on what they would do with the Academy Street building and property. We're expecting, the closing date for them to submit that is, Dave?
December eighteenth.
December eighteenth. So at that point in time, your steering committee will have perhaps as many as ten to twelve proposals from developers who have an idea of what to do with that property and will be warranting to us that they're willing to go forward and spend their money to do it. While the steering committee will sort through these various proposals that come in, it is anticipated that there will be public presentations on a number of these, a chance for the public to react. But in my mind, even though there is a steering committee, ultimately it is going to be this Board of Selectmen that has to sort through all of those and decide which, if any, are deserving of actually going to the public at referendum. So while I think our steering committee is guiding a process, I don't think the decision-making is going to be anywhere other than at this table. That's my view of the upcoming part of the process and if the, when we have these proposals in hand and sort them, through them a bit, I imagine we'll be showing them to the public. We want to make this very visible and transparent. We'll be showing them to the public, I guess, in January-ish.
Here, at meetings here?
Ish, January-ish, mid-winter. I think we'll do everything we can to make sure those proposals are on the website. We will certainly be speaking with reporters, making sure they understand what these proposals are, and then inviting the public to hear directly from the developers about what it is they're proposing. That step has a very fancy word. Is it charrette?
Yeah.
A presentation. So I think there'd be an opportunity for many, for folks, for our citizens to participate in this process. And I wouldn't want anybody to think that this steering committee is somehow going to be controlling events. It's really going to have to happen here in public at this table. So that's my sense of where we're at at the moment. Tom and I sit on that representing the selectmen and there are other folks involved with that, so.
Would we expect to winnow the proposals down as selectmen for then the public discussion?
Yeah, my thought and the group's thought has been that we would get, let's say we get ten proposals back. And a big part of the proposal is the financial capability of the firm that's proposing. We're with the consultant at Collier, we're going to do an analysis of that financial capability. If they don't appear to be financially capable to pull the project off, I think our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen is that they do not advance to a public process because we don't want to share something with the public that doesn't have any legs and that might kind of fall flat in the long run. So that would probably be a recommendation from that subcommittee to the selectmen. And let's say the selectmen pick seven out of the ten projects to move, I do think it would go to that charrette process, which would be beneficial for the town so everybody has a chance to review those proposals. But it's also beneficial to the respondent because we could build in an opportunity for them to receive that feedback and tweak their proposal a little bit to respond to that so then we get even, you know, better proposals that have additional public feedback. So that public process could actually go on for a little while depending on how robust we're able to make it, how we're able to get the public to participate in. But yeah, I think we would, my thought is we probably will end up cutting some people out right in the beginning. We don't, you know, what happened in Clinton is they had a big project got approved and then recently just went dead. Partially that was funding, partially some other issues, but we don't want that to happen here. Whatever goes to referendum and people hold on, we want it to happen. We want to try to make that assurance.
So, maybe just to put a fine point on it, the diligence work that this board does will be quantitative in nature and not qualitative, so we're not going to winnow out a particular idea for use that is, that is and was always going to go to the public.
Yes, I wouldn't suggest that you will. If you don't like a particular project for its architecture, for the use, I wouldn't suggest you cut it out for that reason. I would suggest you cut it out just because you don't, the firm doesn't have a track record of being able to pull something like that off.
So this is all heading to public engagement. We'll provide the opportunity. It's going to be up to interested individuals to actually come out and participate.
I have just a couple of quick questions. So I applaud the process. I think this is, this is fantastic that, you know, we've engaged the public, that we're moving forward on an exciting endeavor here. I guess, you know, I've asked a couple of questions to the selectmen behind the scenes and, you know, trying to get a bit more clarity on this. You know, given, given it's a steering committee made up of the public, I guess, and I don't know if Tom, is this a question for you or for Dave, but how was the steering committee determined? Members of the steering committee, how were they selected? What was the criteria?
I think we were just looking for people who were involved in economic activity in the town. So we used the Economic Development Committee, the Chamber of Commerce.
Historic.
Historic District Commission. You know, people who, Dave's in the planning department. So, and along the way, we've spoken with all these commissions to get some input from them as to, you know, their feeling about how things should move forward. Historic District Commission advised us on whether the building could be raised or not. Economic Development has, you know, been involved all along the way in terms of getting colliers involved, but also getting, reaching out to potential developers.
The only thing I'd add is that, you know, the kind of steering committee was pretty loose in the beginning and then when, once we hired colliers, we asked for their advice on what the steering committee should be composed of and they thought that what we had in place was successful and good. We, we asked them, do you want two people helping, working with you to try to bring this board or you want twenty people? I said, well, you got, I think, seven or eight now, that's a good group, has this diverse interest. I think the only one that maybe we could still get on board at some point is from the Board of Finance. I think that was the only recommendation that Colliers made. I know we have Craig Bernard on there, who's a recent addition who has a finance background and he also was on planning and zoning, so I think he fulfills that role in some way. But that was, other than that, this kind of second look at it was through Colliers and they were happy with that.
And that was sort of where I was going, is that I'm mildly concerned that it's a little bit too loosey-goosey, that, you know, a project of this magnitude and this importance, the focus on membership of the steering committee to me seems a little too informal. You know, an example that comes to mind, you know, as a representative of the public is, you know, potentially somebody from the arts community. You know, why don't we have somebody representing that? Why don't we have somebody representing the athletic community, given that, you know, three out of the five acres are athletic fields? I guess I'm surprised about that. So to me, it's a little too informal. There's an informality there as opposed to maybe the selectmen making it more formal in terms of the membership. And I get the fact that it's, you know, something that, you know, is going to ultimately come to a decision-making focus here at the Board of Selectmen. And, you know, I come back to the RFP process. I was frustrated that the RFP didn't come to the Board of Selectmen in disclosure that we're the decision-making body prior to it going out to the public.
Okay. Anything else? Great. Thank you. Number twenty-one, discuss bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee.
So I'll, I guess, start this discussion. This is really kind of a heads up on something I'm going to be bringing to you in the future and just to kind of get kind of an informal go-ahead, Dave, start running with this. So the concept of having a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee is in our plan of conservation and development. And the idea is that this advisory committee would be advisory to the Board of Selectmen and they would make recommendations to you on where sidewalks may be needed in town or bike lanes may be needed in town. They would help identify grant opportunities and other things to help promote biking and walking and make it easier for the residents of Madison. I had tried for several years to try to get this up to the selectmen level and was unsuccessful. Recently, we were having a conversation, Tom and I, and Virginia Raft, discussing the Shoreline Greenway Trail and how we might work better together to kind of promote the concept of a multi-use trail in town and to carry that ball forward. And Virginia, you know, she was part of the plan of conservation and development group. She had brought the suggestion, well, what if we get that group established and start developing a bicycle and pedestrian master plan? And as part of that plan, the Shoreline Greenway Trail would be incorporated into it. So it would be just a component of this larger effort. And so that's not dissimilar to what Guilford is doing. Remember Guilford, the controversy with their Shoreline Greenway Trail? They actually denied that project and they are going to be developing a bicycle and pedestrian master plan also with a thought of figuring out how the Shoreline Greenway Trail fits into that. So what I would like to do is come back to you with a suggestion of a charge for this committee. I think the primary motivation initially would be to develop that master plan, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, again, would identify gaps in our sidewalk network that we might want to connect and would identify sidewalks that are in disrepair that we might need to start allocating funding towards, bike routes, all those, those sorts of things. I was speaking recently to persons on the planning committee in Guilford and there may be some opportunity that we can actually work with Guilford on this and not in terms of, I think our network could be independent, it would show linkages into Guilford, so they wouldn't necessarily have input on our network, but in terms of design, signage, all things like that that are probably shared, you know, that we need to look at together, I think we could save potentially some money. And so I'm going to do some due diligence and try to figure out if that's a possibility and try to figure out what some, what it might cost the town to develop this master plan. I'll have that information to you when I come back with a proposed charge. But again, this is, in the POCD, there's a bunch of bicycle and pedestrian-related kind of tasks in here which this group would then, again, advise you on how to move forward. So thoughts, as Virginia's here and Terry Reinhardt from the Shoreline Greenway Trail, I give them an opportunity to say, if they wanted to say anything about this idea.
Oh, we support it very strongly. The one thing you didn't say was that there's hanging out, there is a federal grant for Shoreline Greenway Trail expenses that we need fairly soon to figure out what we're going to do with or we're going to lose it. And it's matched twenty percent by state funding, so it's, you know, it's a fair amount that needs to be used well and planned into this plan.
The other thing I'd mention real quick before we go, Al, is that, you know, Tom and I, we look at a lot of different grant opportunities. There's a lot actually grant funding available for pedestrian connected bicycle facilities. And if we had an advisory group like this as well as a master plan, it would put us in a much more competitive situation to actually get those grants because we'd have some backup documentation to show that we thought this through very thoroughly. So I think it would help leverage some funding in the future.
I think it's a terrific idea and I would certainly support further development of this. I think these kinds of issues add to the quality of life of living in Madison and I think we should certainly pursue it. Dave, is there any timeline on that existing grant that we should be aware of?
Virginia's with you there. Actually, Tom's already been in touch with the state. The grant is administered by the state DOT and they've set a deadline, Tom, but I don't, I haven't seen the...
They didn't tell me about a deadline. They just, what they did was they moved the money out of the old project and it's basically on hold for us to create a new one.
But it's not indefinite. I mean, it's...
Oh, yeah, sure.
We've got to do something.
Yeah.
I mean, the grant is already like twelve years old. We've got to do something.
How much is it?
Combined, it's about eight hundred thousand.
And it's...
Combined with the state.
How are those monies defined as to how they can be used?
For the Shoreline Greenway.
It has to be a trail project.
Well, biking and pedestrian.
We're actually firming that up. There are a lot more options than we originally understood that there were in terms of...
It's not about, it's not a sidewalk.
What we can do.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Number twenty-two, discuss and take action on an annual senior center membership fee. Austin?
So in your packet, there's a brief explanation. I did change a few things on there, I'll go over those with you. So this is something we've, at the commission level, have been talking about for a couple of years now. Most, if not all, senior centers have some kind of a membership fee. We haven't, we hadn't had one. People, when they come in and ask what's your membership fee, we say, we don't have one at the moment. So starting January one, we'd like to implement a membership fee both for residents and non-residents So our idea is to have a resident membership fee of fifteen dollars per year and a non-resident membership fee of twenty dollars per year. As a non-resident currently, there's no membership fee. When you come in to sign up for, say, Chair Exercise Program, the class is eighteen dollars and we add ten dollars onto that as a non-resident fee. So we have two fees, a resident fee and a non-resident fee. So we have two fees, a resident fee and a non-resident fee. A change to the proposals that you have in your, your hands there would be to continue to have the non-resident fee on top of the membership fee. So, as a Madison resident, Mary Jones, Madison resident, she comes in, she pays her $15 for her membership fee per year, and then, à la carte, pays her whatever she wants going forward. Bob Smith, the Clinton resident, will pay his $20 annual membership fee, and then $10 per program, on top of the registration fee going forward. Now, it's not $10 for every program. We compete with, you know, other towns around us for big trips, like, we're doing a trip to Alaska, China, those kind of big trips that we do. So we don't add a $10 fee to those, because there are a lot of money to begin with, and $10 wouldn't really make sense. But, exercise programs, trips and that such, we do add a $10 non-resident fee. So in terms of, of revenue, last fiscal year, we had 1,422 individual people use the senior center. 1,000 residents, and then 422 non-residents. So if we use those numbers, we're looking at about a $20,000 increase in revenue. And how we would like to split up that revenue, where we'd like to put it is, as you know, we have the Milne Marcus account that pays for Meals on Wheels and Energy Assistance. It was a big chunk of money, but we use, you know, a lot of it every year to pay for the Meals on Wheels and Energy Assistance. So, we'd like to take 80% of that revenue and put it back into the Marcus account to keep that going forward. And then, 20% or about $4,000 would go into our revolving account, to be used at my department's discretion for events, entertainment, logoed items that we did then sell. We don't, our, my budget is not fatty whatsoever. There's not much that's not, you know, spent before, you know, cell phones and cable bill and things like that. So this would give us an opportunity to be able to provide the Madison public with some additional things that.
So you've done some things in the past year, things like Happy Hour, and different things that you use this money for social events, and different things that, to attract more people and kind of keep them close knit to the, the center.
Do you have a sense, where do your proposed fees come in relative to the towns around us?
Everybody's 10 to 25, so we're right, right in the middle. And also with that, there are some, some folks who, there'd be three ways where you could, only Madison residents, not Madison, not non-resident folks, but three ways that we could subsidize your membership fee. So right now, we're looking at, if you qualify for Energy Assistance, the Rent Rebate Program or the State Circuit Breaker Program, we can waive that, that membership fee. So it won't affect the lower-income folks in town, who, you know, 15 bucks is, you know, a week's worth of lunches, maybe.
Are they in your 1,000 number there?
Yeah.
So, so it would be 1,000 less? Do you have a sense of how many individuals that would be?
Couple hundred, hundred and fifty, yeah.
Austin, is this recommendation coming to us from a board or commission, or from, from you?
Both, both. I, we've been talking about it for a couple of years now, I've been hesitant to, to bring it forward. You know, I don't like to add fees or, you know, other items that people have to pay for, but, you know, the response to what we're doing is, is so great, that I think now would be an okay time to do it.
Were any of the commission members concerned that, I'm not sneezing, it's $20,000, it's a lot of money, but this almost feels like a nuisance fee. It's, you know, for, for many of the residents in town, it seems like it's, it's, it's a minor amount of money. For some residents in town, it's a significant amount of money. It seems like a lot of effort to collect 20 grand. I don't know, you've thought about the amount of administrative time and energy to collect these fees, but I, I guess my sense is, if, if we're going to collect these fees, shouldn't we try to collect more?
Well, I think we're, we're in line with what other towns are doing. Administratively, it's just one transaction per year per individual that comes in. So after January 1, if, if you came in to sign up for something, at that moment, we would say, there's a $15 membership fee on top of whatever else you're signing up for.
So you're not sending out a bill, Austin?
Yeah. It's strictly if you use it, if you don't come to the senior center, which we refuse not to, you won't, you won't be charged the membership fee.
Austin, relative to non-residents and residents, what, what, you know, like, just general proportions of people who take, do programs, and people who have meals?
So we have, last year, we had 1,422 individuals stepped foot in the senior center for something, to do something. And 1,000 were Madison folks, and about 420 were, were non, non-residents. In terms of the lunch program?
Yeah.
I would say it's about a 70/30, Madison, non-Madison.
That's pretty similar.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Austin, was there any thought to even making the gap wider with non-resident fees? You know, it's, we're only talking about a $5 difference.
Yeah.
I guess I'm surprised it wasn't more.
We don't want to, you know, obviously, everything we do is for Madison folks, and we keep that in the forefront of any decisions we make. But as you see, you know, 422 non-residents used our facility last year. We don't want to not have them come. And if we increase that fee, you know, $5, $10, $15, everybody's a very intelligent, smart consumer, and, you know, if they go to a place where the registration fee's 10, then they, they will go there. And we, you know, we need as many people as possible to continue to come to the senior center. And, you know, not scaring them away with a huge membership fee, I think, is, is important.
Do you have a sense of what other surrounding towns are doing for non-resident fees?
From what I understand, there's, there's not a non-resident fee. They have one, one fee, but I, I think we get, you know, we have, there's a lot of non-residents that, that come to us for, for a lot of reasons. And, you know, maybe that's more, we have more non-residents coming than, than other towns. We are in the middle of the estuary, which is in Old Sable, which has, I think, 10 towns that, that go there. But the Branford, Guilford, East Haven, they're all, you know, between a $10 and $15 fee across the board for, for both.
Mentioned the Milne Marcus, how much is it depleted each year, you know, roughly?
Yes, so we do, so the Meals on Wheels is about 2,500 a month, and then Energy Assistance varies per year. But I would say that's under, under $10,000 a year for Energy Assistance.
Nice. Okay, number 23, discuss.
We need to take, we need to take.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, are you, you all okay with putting the money into the Marcus account, and then as well having a portion of it into the revolving account?
Yeah, I think what we're voting on is your proposal there, you know, as written to have the revolving funds and, and put the money back into Milne Marcus also.
Stacy's nodding her head, too. It looks like it's, it works, internal.
Okay.
I don't think we did a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
We did a motion in a second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
You did not through a motion.
So moved. So, so moved.
Your second. Okay. Your motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Austin. Number 23, discuss and take action to approve Board of Selectment liaison assignments.
So moved. Second. So, at the start of the meeting, Scott and I have been talking about this, and Scott was good enough to do up a, a piece of paper that we handed out to you. Lauren will get you a copy of it. The conversation was really around two high-level thoughts. The first is the, just the, the number of liaison assignments that we have as a board, and do we really need to, to, to have liaisons with all of those committees, or, or could we maybe more appropriately have those committees come back to this whole board on a regular basis and report on the, the work that they're doing? You know, whether that's twice a year, or, or once a year, depending on the type of commission. So that's one thought. The other thought, which I think we want to introduce here today, but not necessarily take any action on, is the idea that we rotate these assignments with some frequency. I think the some frequency is up to discussion, but we tend to fall into our, our little liaison assignments, and, and we, we kind of fall in love with them, right? We like those groups, we get invested in them, but it means that we don't get to see everything else that's going on. So, again, I don't think that that's something we want to do today. We do need to reshuffle the deck a little bit, because we've got Gene New on the board involved, the party, but just to, just to introduce that thought to the group. But, as far as the liaison assignments go moving forward, these are the ones that, that we thought were absolutely needed, representation. And then on the second page is the groups that we thought we could just allow them to report back to us on a frequent, with some frequency. So I don't know.
Discussion?
I think, I think we're seeking feedback and input, and.
So when you say rotate, how well we need to.
I think, I mean, the discussion we had was, I think, you know, maybe every two years, you know, just to at least make sure that we're not, you know, getting sedentary in our individual roles.
So I rotated to, I mean, according to your list here, I'm rotating to Beach and Rec and Economic Development. I'm not rotating anything else.
I think, I think all we did was distribute, redistribute, as opposed to, my understanding was that was one that you wanted to.
Right.
So that was, Bruce suggested that.
Right, so that's, so the, the net change is because we, we pulled some liaisons out.
So, where we had coverage at WPCA, and L. Wedlin's Historic Commission, Energy Commission, Light Enforcement Appeals, Saltman Park Oversight, Shellfish, Fields Advisory, and Madison Center Project.
Right.
All those would be no liaison anymore?
Yeah, just come to the board and, and have an update as appropriate, as opposed to maybe us actively. And I think there's different levels of engagement here, too, and it, it could also be that, you know, I've done this with a couple of mine already, where you're sending an email to the particular boards that you're responsible for, and you get an update, and I, you know, try to speak about those in my selectmen comments at the end, as opposed to maybe always attending the meetings, too. So I think there's a creative sort of balance that we can, we can have here.
Do you think two, two years long? I mean, maybe.
I, I think there's an aspect, at least, so, I've only done it for a year, Dean, so I can give you my perspective, which is fairly new. It takes a while to form the relationships with the groups, and understand sort of the inner workings of the different groups, so I, I think two years feels right to me, just given, you know, I, I still feel new to some of the ones that I'm working on right now, that I inherited. And I think there's a, there's a clear learning curve.
Yeah, I, I think Bruce and Scott have helped, helped us refine our thinking here. Each one of these boards and commissions is unique in some way, and sometimes their path to get to the Board of Selectment is not always clear to them. We have turnover on all these boards and commissions as well. So sometimes the liaison role is, has historically been helpful, in helping them understand how they integrate with other things that are going on. I guess, oh, yeah. I guess, whether I'm, would continue to attend as a selectman, or whether I'm just attending as a citizen, I guess a couple of these that I've been historically working with, I would probably choose to continue to attend their meetings.
And, and I think we're happy to make those formal liaisons. I, we're, this is really to get the conversation started. These are the ones we identified.
Yeah.
I'm not surprised, and would be surprised if you or another selectman said, well, I, I really have an affinity for that, one, I, I would like to continue to do that. I, I think we make that a formal liaison, so.
Saltman was one of those we debated.
This is not, this is not a take it or leave it list, by any means.
This, this begs the question, it begs kind of a charter philosophical question of, with 26 boards and commissions, how do you integrate and coordinate the activities of more than 200 people that are serving on these boards and stations? Our predecessor boards of selectmen perhaps used the liaison concept extensively, and now, I think you're rightfully sort of challenging us to say, is this still the right way to do it? I guess, if, if, at the extreme, I fear would be, some of these boards and commissions get lost in the shuffle, and, and sort of get disconnected from the Board of Selectment.
Cool. I think to that point, though, I think maybe, maybe at least this list here, which is the list of no liaison assignments, maybe we put it on, on a rotational, you know, every quarter, every six months, some sort of rotational aspect, so that we're getting them into the meetings.
Yeah.
To get the update.
Well, that, that's, that's.
Right, and I think we can, we can charge them with a reporting frequency, so that they have a clear.
Yeah. Well, anyway, I'm, I'm supportive of the, the fact you've thought this through, and, and, and I think it's worth trying. It's sort of putting the onus on the, the committee to come to us on a regular basis, and we're going to remind them to do that, as opposed to us continually, on a monthly basis, sending one of us to them.
Right. And we consolidated some, too, just in fairness and disclosure here, you know, as an example. So I have Madison Youth and Family Services, and there was FOMI and MAE were two others that were listed on our list. Well, clearly, those are discussed in the contact, context of youth and family, so we consolidated those.
Right, right.
Didn't make sense to have this three line items.
Right, and the, the Fields Advisory Committee is a, is a committee of Beach and Rec, right? So to have a liaison of Beach and Rec, and then a liaison to a subcommittee of, of Beach and Rec, didn't, didn't seem to make a lot of sense.
Depends on the issues of the day, I suppose, Bruce.
Well, and Tom jumped, I mean, Tom's jumped into those, you know, given he's on-site here, too, that does help, so, as needed.
Bruce, are you proposing we, we approve this, or, or what kind of action are you looking for?
Well, I think the, the agenda item is to do the liaison assignments, so I would propose that we modify this if we need to, to everybody's satisfaction, and then take action.
So why don't we, why don't we, so I'll make a motion to approve the list of assignments, liaison assignments, as, as documented.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 24, discuss and take action to appoint two members to the Capital Improvement Program Committee, which I think we just did by approving this.
We did.
I guess we did.
Why don't we make it more formal, so? I'll, I'll motion to approve.
We'll motion.
You guys motioned, yeah, all right.
I'm going to motion to approve Bruce Wilson and Scott Murphy today.
I'll second that.
Well done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 25, discuss and take action to approve 2018 Town Holidays. Finally, this is the one I've been waiting for.
Clearly.
Lots of them.
I also propose adding five more.
What's the delay these day after, day before? I'll make a motion.
Are there any changes from the previous year, and the holidays being recognized?
It's the same, right?
Um, it's the same, the only difference is that because the way Christmas falls next year, instead of having the day after Christmas, it's Monday. year, instead of having the day after Christmas, it's Monday is the 24th and Tuesday is the 25th. So this year we have the 25th and 26th because the 25th, the 24th falls on Sunday.
Makes sense, yeah.
Thank you.
So, motion, Gene, you motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 26, discuss to take action to approve the 2018 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule, which is second Monday mornings and the fourth Monday evenings, right?
Except for the few times when the second Monday morning falls on holiday and the meetings will move to Tuesday. And Al, the only thing is, he'll see that I have an asterisk on September 10th because that's R. Shoshana, so I don't know if you want to move that one.
I would, but...
That's fine. I move that to Tuesday? Is Tuesday enough time or...
That's fine.
Okay.
Which one is that, so?
That's September 10th, so it'll not be Tuesday, September 11th, if anything.
Tom, I don't want to cause too much mischief, but it's been many a year since the Board of Selectmen asked itself whether the, having alternate morning and evening meetings makes the most sense for our public. I don't think it's in the charter, I think it's just our tradition, and it's a well-founded tradition for sure, but from time to time, maybe we just ought to rethink it.
I think, I mean, just a comment on that, I think it's worked well because you get the balance of the staff, also you're respecting the staff time.
Yeah.
So they're here. Costin, as an example, so, yeah.
Well, I think our predecessors were very wise, but any sense that there's something wrong with it?
I think Scott said it well, I think it's an opportunity for staff to be here.
So, move a motion? Any second, do you have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second?
As amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number 27, discuss budget workshop schedule. So moved?
We have two, right?
There's two, yes, two, thanks, sir.
There are two in the packet. One is, the one that is not colored.
Yep.
This is exactly how it would be if we kept things the way that they were done last year, just updating them for this year's dates. And the one that has the color has been updated by Tom and by Stacy, and there's some notes in the far side column of what they've changed.
We want the one in yellow, is what I'm hearing.
You see that what we've done is we've combined a lot of these, facing Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, rather than dragging people out for two different presentations, you know, let everybody... And this also gives the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen an opportunity to kind of talk through the process and understand where we're going so that we don't find ourselves at odds when we get to the end.
That's great.
So, this is good, and the color one is good. I like the notion of getting friends involved so that they're hearing the presentations, they're with us in the process, and don't have to repeat everything that we've done when they, when it comes time for their deliberation. What's not in here, and I think does need to be in here, is a capital planning meeting schedule, this year, actually, this month, and then only in the next month. So this is the operating budget.
Right. Since we're tired, make your own schedule, will you?
We don't, I think the Board of Selectmen need to have a schedule to look at the projects and to make the recommendation onto the CIP of what our priorities are.
So it's a nice discussing what Tom already put together, but having the projects come in.
Exactly, so, yeah, what Tom's recommendation is the starting point for the discussion that then we can all feel comfortable with and move forward. And this year, it's gonna be get together as best we can via workshops, special workshops, meetings, special meetings, whatever that, whatever name we put on it.
Do you envision, just to clarify what you're saying, so are you thinking, you know, Scott Erskine from Beach and Rec would come in and propose his projects to the Board of Selectmen? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
I think, so, the way I would have us start the process is to become familiar with Tom's recommendations, and then we can decide what project we want to hear presentations on, what ones, you know, we don't need to do.
So we fly people.
I think we also have the high-level thought that Tom has introduced several times now, which is, we've got a lot going on, we need to get that cleaned up, and clearly that would have some impact on projects that we move forward, to the extent that we have the bandwidth within town to do. So I think this board needs to get on the same page with that notion and put its stamp on that. So, I mean, we can move this operating schedule forward, I have no issue with that at all.
Okay, this is just a discussion, Dean, my son.
Yeah, maybe we put on our next selectman meeting, or at least one of the next two, is a discussion and an action maybe around Tom's proposed plan, as a sort of a first step.
So, yes, but, if we could find a time to get together as a workshop before Thanksgiving, at least once...
Outside of this...
CIP is gonna take up their work for real in December, you know, practically speaking. So, I think we've got to do a bit of a scramble to get our arms around the projects that we want the CIP to consider, and give them the benefit of some guidance.
Right, and it's more that conversation we've had around the strategic plan, it's giving them that strategic guidance to, you know, whether we're gonna, you know, just focus on existing projects, as opposed to adding new projects, as an example.
So, I don't know if you want to handle it inside of this motion or outside of this motion.
Well, there's no motion because we're just discussing it.
Yeah, fine.
So, yeah, I think that's a good idea, I think we should, we'll schedule a meeting, and we can do it before Thanksgiving, I mean, I'm not sure if that's a problem.
Cool.
All right.
I've got some serious questions here. I'm trying to, I'm looking at this colored document, and I'm comparing it to the traditional way we've done things, and I don't want to get stuck on tradition, but I'm seeing something philosophically very different here. I've seen that the selectmen are no longer meeting on their own to discuss the budget, but nearly all of these meetings are combined meetings with the Board of Finance. Traditionally, the charter seems to indicate to me that the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen when it comes to budgeting are separate but equal processes, and this proposed schedule seems to merge the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen activities into a combined set of meetings throughout the process, and we are no longer then separate boards as we're considering this, and the check and the balance seems to be lost here. Now, maybe I'm misunderstanding this entirely, so I try to understand the thinking that's in this. Stacy, you look like you're gonna answer it.
Well, yeah, I think this has been a discussion item for many years, I think probably over the last three or four, to try to get the boards together and work together and see where they're each coming from. So the way that we developed the calendar was for the Board of Selectmen to meet first, and then come up with a plan, come up with their goals or guidelines, and then to have four combined workshops together so that you're all, you're the same thing, the Board of Finance can listen on what the Board of Selectmen, what their plan is. We don't, during those four workshops, any items that would be approved would only be Board of Selectmen, it would not be Board of Finance, because the Board of Finance is not officially in their process yet. Because you're right, Al, in the charter, the Board of Selectmen hands it over to the Board of Finance at that first public hearing, but we just thought it would save both boards a lot of time to go through the process together, but we did identify separate meetings as well. So if you look at the schedule, Board of Selectmen meets first, there's four combined workshops, and then there's two just Board of Selectmen workshops to discuss afterwards and come up with their plan and what they want to recommend to the Board of Finance. Then we go to public hearing, then the Board of Finance will meet separately, hopefully only two instead of six meetings in the past because they've already met four times together.
Maybe the nomenclature, in the four combined workshops, are those really Board of Selectmen meetings with the Board of Finance simply in attendance?
Sure.
And they will, the Board of Finance will be participating in the discussion, or will they be more passively witnessing the discussion?
That's up to you all, I just, we had thought that if we can all be in the same room at the same time, and at least if it is a Board of Selectmen meeting, or at least the Board of Finance is there, and could hear your rationale on why you're making certain decisions, rather than you do your work and then passing it out, and the Board of Finance doing their work. We just thought collectively that you can work together and see what's going on through the process, but that's up to you if you want to make it a combined workshop where Board of Selectmen or the Board of Finance is present.
I think just denoting whose meeting it is might be useful.
Yeah.
In the schedule.
I'm certainly willing to give this a try and evaluate it at the end of the process to see whether it helped. It is a departure from how we've done things.
Correct. But we still are within the charter because the Board of Selectmen will still be placing their recommendation forward to the Board of Finance. If we do decide to call these Board of Selectmen meetings, we may, and we'll talk to the Board of Finance on Wednesday about it, but we may decide to add additional Board of Finance workshops then, because the way it is right now, you're all kind of working together. Yes, the Board of Finance is not making any official decisions, but they only have two meetings after the public hearing, so they may want to consider to add more meetings and then why, I don't know if they're gonna want to do four before and then four after. The purpose was to try to streamline the whole thing and work together.
Well, my observation, too, Al, just to build on what you were saying, was that, you know, so this is starting as of December 15th, but a lot of our selectman-only, you know, discussions and deliberations are happening prior to that. And then we get into the joint meetings. So I don't know if that, is that correct? Am I reading that right?
You will get the budget on January 10th, so, and then you, historically, we've always had these two combined meetings, one on a Saturday for the volunteers and the outside departments come in, the library, the host companies, on a Saturday, and then we would have a Tuesday where it would be another combined workshop, that's nothing new, and certain departments would come in. I think this year we're recommending, because there's so many new board members, that we have all the departments come in and just pretty much introduce themselves and explain what their department is and what's gonna be, you know, and what's included in their budget, because chances are, you know, during the year, they, a lot of them only come to board meetings if they have an item on the agenda. So those two meetings are the same as they've always been, it's not, then the next meeting, we did a Board of Selectmen, let's start the process with, you know, how do we want to run the next four meetings, and then we combined the two boards for the next four meetings.
Stacy, you're gonna be taking this to the Board of Finance, as we, you have no way to know how they're gonna react to it.
Correct.
There are a lot of new board members over there.
It's a discussion item for both.
Do we have quorum concerns now? Instead of getting five people together, we're getting 11 people together? If, for some reason, the Board of Finance didn't have a quorum for one of these meetings, would we not be able to have the meeting?
I think that's a Lauren question.
So, essentially, any meeting that is held, even if it's called a joint meeting, is actually called by one board. So if we're going to say that these are joint meetings, but that they're traditionally have been Board of Selectmen meetings, then it would be your meeting. You can invite the Board of Finance in, they can participate in the discussion as long as you let them, but there's nothing that they can vote on when they're at the joint meeting called by the Board of Selectmen, and vice versa. If it's a joint meeting called by the Board of Finance, you all go, you attend, you can discuss, but you will not vote. So a quorum for the other, like the bonus commission that's in attendance, is moved. What matters is that if you're going to make any votes as the board who's calling the meeting, that's what matters. So if it's technically called by the Board of Selectmen and you are planning on voting, then you do need a quorum. However, you do not need a quorum to hold a meeting or to have a discussion, you just need a quorum to vote.
So, the idea here, as I understand it, is that by giving the Board of Finance the opportunity to see our deliberative process, when they get the budget at their point to take action, they will have the benefit of that, and as they're weighing the numbers, that it will be easier for them to come to a decision point on it. So it really informs their process more than it informs our process, but benefits all of us in the long run.
Well, and even some of that back and forth last year probably would have prevented some of that because they could be in the room saying, "Well, no, you can't do that."
Certainly, we would want to solicit that type of input if they were...
Yeah, but we're not gonna support that.
Right.
Are we voting or just...
No, it's just a discussion.
Unless you want to open the agenda to the board.
Unless what?
Unless you want to open the agenda to the board.
Is there value in adopting it now, or is there...
I mean, if you guys adopt it now, then it just makes the process a little bit smoother, but the Board of Fin, there's no, like, way to know if the Board of Finance will open their agenda to go on it on Wednesday.
Well, why don't we just...
Tell the Board of Finance that you guys really agree on the task.
That's a good idea, why don't we do that? Anyone wanna make a motion to open the agenda? Second? All in favor?
We're opening the agenda.
Aye.
Okay, now, I'm motion to accept the schedule, the budget workshop schedule.
So moved?
Tag it.
It's this one.
The yellow.
The color one.
The color one.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So we can throw this one out, then, the white one.
Okay, number 28, tax abatements and refunds.
We accept the request for abatements and refunds of $4,927.33.
Tag it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 29, citizens' comments. Hearing none, I'll move to number 30, liaison reports, selectmen comments. Who wants to go first?
I've got a number of things from there. Good friends with the police commission. One is a result of the recent storm here in Connecticut, the police commissioners are urging the town contingency plan to identify a system for those with special needs, citizens at home with special needs. Because of the event of the storm, the police aren't quite sure who they ought to be covering and where special situations might arise. I guess historically, this town has just looked to neighbors of citizens with special needs to keep an eye on them, but to the extent that we're expecting our police department to keep an eye on them, they don't have a database to know where they should be directing their attention. So they would find that would be very helpful in the town's contingency planning. Secondly, I was asked to mention that this year's turkey trot will again be starting from the town green. There's been information published in the newspaper and elsewhere about temporary traffic disruptions on Thanksgiving morning, and interestingly, this year, the town's Public Works Department will be providing some trucks to help block off some of the intersections. So it's much more organized this year. The third item the police commissioners discussed at length will be their budget request to us for some more police officers, so we can anticipate that coming our way. The fourth, the next policy item was the police commissioners are urging the Board of Selectmen to take action to move the dispatch center on the organizational chart back to where they think it belongs, and that is the dispatch center reporting to the Board of Police Commissioners. They are urging us to take action on that.
We should put that on our next agenda.
Where does it report to right now? Reports to us.
Reports to us.
Board of Selectmen, yeah.
And finally, a very prominent local citizen has suggested to the police commissioners, in their role as municipal traffic authority, that we ask the state to look at a possibility of creating a rotary at the intersection of Route 1 and Route 79. And the police commissioners are taking steps to ask the state to possibly have a look at that.
are taking steps to ask the state to possibly have a look at that.
Would we see public input for that type of... It's a long, long process.
It's part of the process.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's interesting.
Gene, you want to go next?
I have no reports, it's my first time, my only time.
I'm going to help you out too, Tom, I have no report, I have the library building committee tonight, so I will know more at our next meeting.
Okay. Nothing to report. Good, well, thanks everybody, it's our most important ever. I have a motion, I have a second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
And they think we don't work hard.